Monday, October 5th to order. And Sandy, can we have a roll call, please?
House of Members Shippers?
Here.
Ellen Bass?
Here.
Ingalls?
Here.
King?
Here.
Mayor Folkes?
Here. And at this time, if we could have an approval of the agenda. I think there's some amendments, right Marcus?
Yes, Mayor, members of the City Council, there's an amendment to request that we add an alley assessment petition to the manager's report. I believe it's item A.
Yes, this is Ellen Bass. I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as amended to add an alley assessment petition to the city manager's report.
Shippers supports.
House Member Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkes?
Yes. Motion carries. This time we'll open the floor for public comment. We do ask if someone is going to speak, if you do state your name, and then also keep your comments to three minutes or less. Hearing no one, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from the special meeting that was held on October 1st, 2020.
The Shippers, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Ellen Bass will second.
House Member Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Folkes?
Yes, motion carries. And then I'll take us into some communications that we have this evening, Sandy.
Yes, the first request is to approve the sign request for the used book sale as presented, and to approve the display of a banner from October 19th to the 26th, 2020, for the Friends of the Library.
This is Ellen Bass. I'll make a motion to approve the sign request for the used book sale as presented, and to approve the display of a banner from October 19th to the 26th, 2020, for the Friends of the Library.
This is King, I'll support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Folkes?
Yes, motion carries.
The next request is to approve the display of a banner from November 16th to the 23rd, 2020, for the Cadillac Area Symphony Orchestra.
The Shippers, I'll make a motion to approve the hanging of a banner for the Cadillac Symphony Orchestra from, I can't read it, from November 11th, 2020, to November 25th, 2020.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls? Ingalls?
Oh, sorry, yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkes?
Yes, motion carries.
The next request is to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM on November 21st, 2020, for the Toy Town Toy Trot 5K.
Ellen Bass here, I'll make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM on November 21st, 2020, for the Toy Town Toy Town Toy Trot 5K.
This is Ingalls, I'll support.
House Member Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkes?
Yes, motion carries. And then this evening, we do have some appointments.
Yes, the first request is being recommended to approve the reappointment of Stephen Gregory to the City of Cadillac Clam Lake Joint Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on October 5th, 2023.
This is Shippers, I'll make a motion to reappoint Stephen Gregory to a three-year term on the City of Cadillac Clam Lake Joint Planning Commission, which will end on October 5th, 2023.
Ellen Bass will second.
House Member Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Folkes?
Yes, motion carries.
It's also being recommended to approve the reappointment of Mickey Putman to the Elected Officials Compensation Commission for a five-year term to expire on October 19th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Mickey Putman to the Elected Officials Compensation Commission for a five-year term to expire on October 19th, 2025. This is Robert.
Shippers supports.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Folkes?
Yes, motion carries.
It's also being recommended to approve the appointment of Michael Blackmer to the Corridor Improvement Authority Cadillac West Resort Area for a four-year term to expire on October 5th, 2024.
This is Ellen Bass, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Michael Blackmer to the Corridor Improvement Authority Cadillac West Resort Area for a four-year term to expire on October 5th, 2024.
This is Ingalls, I'll support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkes?
Yes, motion carries.
The next request is to approve the appointment of Greg Bosher to the Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on October 5th, 2023.
This is Shippers, I will make a motion to appoint Greg Bosher to a three-year term on the Planning Commission, which will expire on 10/5/2023.
This is Ingalls, I'll support.
Councilmember Ellen Bass? Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkes?
Yes, motion carries. All right, and that takes us to the city manager's report this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The first item, A, I apologize that we added it this evening. We did send letters out to all of the folks that were a part of the alley assessment program, advising them that it would be on tonight's meeting and how to connect. We simply forgot to stick it on the agenda on Friday before we printed it. But, long story short, there's no recommended action for council to take this evening. The city was asked by a group of residents interested in having a special assessment put in place to redo their alley in between Chapin and Division Streets in the vicinity of Carmel and Delmar. Those would be the north-south crossing streets. We require a petition put together before we do any kind of preliminary estimating. So we had a petition from folks saying, please go ahead and move forward. We did our preliminary estimating, and the numbers came in relatively high. When bringing that information back to the people, they advised sort of thanks but no thanks, and can you perhaps do some increased maintenance work to that alleyway, which is what you'll see in the communication we're going to look to do. I'm not certain if there's any questions that you may have. The Public Works Department and Engineering really took the sort of the lead on this project, and certainly if you do have more questions, I or Owen can try to address them. But I wanted to bring this to council's attention, as it is required, but we have a petition for a special assessment coming forward that I brief the board. So, I'm sorry?
I know that, I just said, all right.
Oh, okay.
What kind of special maintenance are we talking about, Marcus? I mean, I'm familiar with the alley.
Sure, sure. My understanding is that we're going to add additional gravel, try to plane it out a little bit differently so that it helps with some of the water flow and problems that are out there with the way that it's dumping water at the bottom. But, you know, the topography of that area isn't the best, and you have people that are situated lower than others, and of course, everything runs downhill, so.
And technically, really, if we wanted to solve the problem, there should be a drain there, correct?
There should be a what?
A drain.
Yeah, I don't want to speak on behalf of our engineer, I don't believe that she's on the meeting this evening, that might be a reasonable solution to it, but I would assume that that would have been a part of a reconstruction project, but not what we'll end up doing in terms of additional gravel and blading.
Okay.
So. Not a, it's not a long-term solution, but rather a short-term fix. If there's no other questions, then I'm prepared to move on to the next item on the list. Mayor?
COVID-19 update?
Yep. So, under the District Health Department number 10 site, as of today, there's 1,749 total cases for the district, 28 total deaths. In Wexford County, there's 119 positive cases with four deaths. Within the district, which is a 10-county area, there's 1,318 total recoveries, with 91 in Wexford. And again, I would direct everybody to please visit their website, dhd10.org, for more up-to-date information, specifically, or especially, I should say, since there's bound to be some updates after the Michigan Supreme Court on Friday afternoon overturned a lot of what's been going on through the state in terms of the executive orders and authority coming out of the governor's office. And so, this has been a very sort of fast-moving issue. In fact, within, I would say, the last hour to hour and a half, I forwarded a press release that came to me from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, indicating what is, you know, what their plans are under their authority, and then it even specifically talks about Region 6, which we're in, and some of the changes within Region 6. But I would like Mike Homier to take a couple of minutes, giving us a brief from his perspective, additionally, to talk about also the resolution that we have, that's about 10 years old now regarding meeting attendance and the request to rescind it this evening. So Mike, if you could perhaps take the floor?
Sure. So, I would say first and foremost, the Supreme Court did not make COVID go away. It is still out there. So, what the Supreme Court was asked to do was to answer two questions that were certified to it by the federal district court in litigation that's pending in the federal district court. It was not the result of a purely state court action filed in state court making its way to the Supreme Court, although there is a case that is making its way, that the legislature brought against the governor, and rests on the very same questions as those that the federal district court certified to the Supreme Court. So I would expect, although I can't guarantee, that the Supreme Court will find the same way when it eventually gets to that case as well. That case was not decided at the same time. So what has happened is the Supreme Court issued an opinion, holding that beyond April 30th, the governor lacked all authority to issue executive orders based upon a state of emergency under the 1945 Act, Emergency Management Act. The 1976 Act allowed her to issue a state of emergency, but that expires 28 days after it's issued unless the legislature agrees to extend it, which it did not do beyond the April 30th date. That doesn't necessarily mean that that will not occur, it just hasn't occurred as of yet. So, the Supreme Court sent its opinion over to the federal district court. The federal district court, in the case pending before it, as of this, prior to the meeting tonight, to my knowledge, has not issued any orders concerning the disposition of that case. So, in, for all intents and purposes, right now, we have an opinion by the Supreme Court with no actual order, other than saying that the governor lacked any authority to issue executive orders past April the 30th. That does not also necessarily mean that you can take your mask off and burn it, and you can hold public meetings indoors without restrictions, because under the Public Health Code, both MDHHS as well as the local health authorities have broad authority to issue orders to combat pandemics, epidemics, contagious diseases, and that's what's starting to happen. And we predicted that would happen as early as Friday night, once we saw the order from the Supreme Court. Just before your meeting tonight, MDHHS issued an order incorporating some of the provisions of Executive Order 183, as it applies to social gatherings and events, specifically by region. It's carving out sort of Regions 6 and 8. So for Regions 6 and 8, they talk about indoor non-residential events and outdoor non-residential events, and the fixed limitation is 25% of seating capacity, or 25 people per thousand square feet of venue space in each, or in each room. And for outdoor, it's 30% of seating capacity, 30 people per thousand square feet of venue space, or in each room in those venues without seating capacity. So what that means is that, you know, if you are going to, if you are going to resume holding in-person meetings, your capacity would be limited to a cap of 25 people, or sorry, 25% of seating capacity, whatever number that might be. Some of the local health department orders are more restrictive than that, and again, I believe that the local health official under the Public Health Code has the authority to issue those orders. The problem, of course, is whether or not you can have that seating capacity and still comply with the Open Meetings Act if enough public shows up to exceed the seating capacity issued by orders of MDHHS or the local health department, which puts the city, as well as all of our other clients, in the untenable position of trying to comply with both when it both may, when compliance with both may not be possible. That brings up the issue, and has been raised repeatedly over the weekend, about whether or not the city and other municipalities can continue holding electronic meetings. The electronic meetings was issued under the most recent, would have been Executive Order 2020-154. Although from the beginning, I am not convinced that holding an electronic meeting violates the Open Meetings Act in any way, shape, or form. So, can you continue to hold electronic meetings? I believe that you can, even under the Open Meetings Act. The notice requirements under the Open Meetings Act states that you need to indicate the place where the meeting is being held, and I think that online or Zoom meeting qualifies as a place. I think it's difficult for anybody to argue that they don't have the same access as they would have at a meeting, that is, the right to attend a meeting, the right to public comment, which they certainly have via electronic means, and the technology has gotten much better so that it facilitates the in-person attendance by all of the public. Is it the same, or absolutely the same as in-person? No, it's not absolutely the same. But it provides sort of the basis for public participation, and that is opportunity to attend public meetings, and opportunity to have two-way transmission or dialogue with the city council. So, we expect to know more probably this week, although I can't guarantee it, depending on what, on a couple of different things. One is what the federal district court does in that underlying case, and the scope of any order issued in that case. Two would be any additional local health department or MDHHS orders under the Public Health Code. And three would be any clarification from the Supreme Court regarding its opinion, because the governor has requested that the Supreme Court provide guidance on the effective date of its opinion regarding the state of emergency and the executive orders. The governor is asking the court to clarify that those do not terminate until October 30th. I don't want to foreshadow, but I can't see the court agreeing that you could continue these unconstitutional orders until October 30th, which would be even beyond a 21-day from the date the opinion was issued. So I don't know yet what's going to happen with that, but for the meantime, we've advised all of our municipal clients that continue with the status quo. I suspect more is coming this week. And again, I believe that you fall within the scope of the OMA by continuing to hold electronic meetings.
Mike, can you segue into the resolutions?
Yeah, so that brings up this issue with the resolution, that the city had adopted a policy some 10 years ago now, that precluded attendance by electronic means. But the technology is vastly different between then and now, such that we're able to hold video conference meetings, not just attend by telephone, although you could do that too. Attending by telephone conference was never prohibited under the Open Meetings Act. There was at one time legislation proposed to make attendance by telephone conference prohibited under the Open Meetings Act, that never passed, never went into effect, which if you, if you reason that a change in the law was necessary to preclude attendance by electronic means, I think you can argue equally, if not more forcefully, that participation by electronic means at meetings is permissible, was permissible, when the legislature introduced that legislation, and that died and never became law. So, but you still have this policy issue, and we've been meeting electronically for some period of time, for obvious reasons, because of the executive orders, because of the shutdown, because of the necessity of carrying on work at the city. And so we recommend that you rescind that prior policy, which was adopted by resolution, and we've provided a resolution that provides for that.
And so I guess, Mike, along with Mayor, members of the council, if Mike wants to share your screen, if you could pull that up, you've got the, you should have a resolution in front of you called the Resolution to Repeal, the Resolution Requiring Physical Attendance at Meetings of the City Council. It's rather short, I'll simply read it. Whereas on, and there's a typo that we need to fix, but the first whereas would be whereas on February 10th, 2010, the city adopted a resolution requiring physical attendance at meetings of the city council, and whereas the resolution prohibits city council members from remotely attending a meeting using technology and requires in-person physical attendance, and whereas the city finds since 2010, technology has improved dramatically in high-quality video conferencing and other technology makes virtual meetings and remote attendance at meetings a more feasible option now than in 2010, and whereas the city further finds that the COVID-19 pandemic has made virtual meetings necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and whereas the city concludes that while physical attendance at meetings is ideal, when it is safe and lawful, it no longer serves the public health, safety, and welfare to require physical attendance at all council meetings. Now, therefore, the city council of the City of Cadillac, Wexford County, Michigan, resolves as follows, "Resolution Requiring Physical Attendance at Meetings of City Councils Hereby Repealed. Any and all resolutions that are in conflict with this resolution are hereby repealed, to the extent necessary to give this resolution full force and effect." And if council has any questions or comments, certainly this would be, you know, the time to ask, otherwise it would also be appropriate if somebody wanted to make a motion that would get council to consider adopting this resolution.
Thank you, Marcus.
This is Councilmember Shippers. Hearing no questions, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution rescinding, how do I word this, rescinding the resolution prohibiting electronic participation, or technology participation in city council meetings. Is that enough?
Yeah, it's actually a resolution to repeal, resolution requiring physical attendance at meetings of city council.
Okay, I'll make that resolution.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Folkes?
Yes, motion carries.
Mayor, can I just add one point, and that is, I know everybody wants to get back to in-person meetings, all of my clients do, but there still exists a danger out there, and given the limited seating capacity, you know, the city council held a special meeting at the market, and there, it's outside, you can space out, it certainly makes much more sense, but when you're in a confined space, I mean, I would much rather err on the side of caution and protecting people. Those sort of, those people who unwittingly show up to a meeting either with the disease or in close proximity to somebody with it that get it, and, you know, we would not feel good about that, I can guarantee that. So, I, you know, I know everybody wants to get back to in-person meetings, and we will get there, it's just, I think, I think you've made the right decision to continue until we see what the landscape is with respect to the legal aspect of it, as well as how this plays out in the poll.
Okay, thank you, Mike. All right, and then we have a second resolution.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next resolution is a resolution that amends our General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2021. This is in regards to the purchase of our fire truck. Owen, I'm not sure if you're still with us or having tech issues, but I'll be happy to read the summary.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay.
You want to read the summary real quick?
Yeah, so, I'll just give the details. Essentially, this is just the timing of the final payment on the fire truck. We expect to take delivery of the truck just here within the next few days, even, or maybe even, maybe a couple of weeks at the most. So, we just need to essentially transfer the final payment appropriation into the current year. So this is not a new purchase or anything. We didn't pay this portion last year, but we have to pay it this year. So that's the only thing that this is doing.
How much is that, Owen?
How much is the rest? It's the full $200,000 that's being requested. So we've paid about just under 400, and so the total price was 600 of the truck.
And it's replacing one, that's how old? It's replacing one?
I think it's a 2,000. It's early, it's right in there somewhere.
We get our money's worth out of them.
Yeah, we sure do, and they take great care of these trucks, and get maximum life out of them, so they really take good care of them.
No doubt about that, thank you.
Yep.
No other questions? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution pending General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2021.
This is Ingalls, I'll support that.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes, motion carries.
Yep, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next one is a request to adopt a resolution to extend the time for conditionally authorized marijuana businesses, business applicants to submit step-two applications to the State of Michigan Marijuana Regulatory Agency. And I know that Mike will eagerly step in when I, if, if I step off the, the right trail here. But long story short is the State of Michigan adjusted their process internally, and now they don't want applicants to contact them until they're basically ready to open up their doors. You know, they're ready for final inspection. And so by, by making that adjustment, what it's done is it's requiring now for the city to adjust our own process. And, and what I mean by that is currently in the ordinance, it requires that, I believe, applicants file within 30 days of being notified of the, of the conditional license filed with the State of Michigan to begin their next steps. But that, that's just not, not feasible anymore because the applicants aren't going to be ready for quite some time, especially the one that's building a brand-new facility. And so the ordinance does allow for the city council to, by resolution, to adjust the timeframes accordingly, and that's what we're asking city council to do this evening. Mike, I don't know if you wanted to add any finer points to that, but that's, that's the issue in a nutshell.
Yeah, the city council has the authority on good cause to extend that filing deadline, deadline. Under your ordinance, they have to file with LARA within 30 days of receiving conditional authorization under the city's ordinance. That now is not possible because the, the state has changed the manner in how they accept those step-two applications, which doesn't necessarily cause us any concern. So if you look at the resolution, the short-term answer is we can extend this by resolution to require that the applicants submit their applications to the Marijuana Regulatory Agency within 60 days after the city approves their special land use permit and site plan. The applicants are still required to file for the special use application and site plan review within 30 days of that conditional authorization because nothing has affected that deadline. So they will be able to, once they, presuming that they get those approvals on special use permit and site plan review, then they can file with the MRA within 60 days after those approvals. That's sort of the short-term fix. Longer term, we want to make, we want, we may want to look at the ordinance and then change that in response to the state and how that's done so that we wouldn't have to, if we get to, say, the waiting list, if some of these applicants don't complete the process and we went to the waiting list, we wouldn't have that same issue come up. So, but we can decide that down the road.
I have one question, Mike. Allen Bass?
Yeah.
With the businesses we've approved, if we put a time limit on, I mean, you're talking about putting up a new building. If we said you've got to be up and running in six months, 12 months, is, is that idea or thought come up? I mean.
It, it came up in the discussions with those applicants, particularly even on the new build. The other ones, I think, Marcus, correct me if I'm wrong, the other ones are all rehab projects.
That is, that is correctly.
But on the, even on the new build project, we, we asked questions about that during the interview process, election process, and we were advised that, you know, they had teams already in place to get started even before the winter. I think that, the, the only delay that I could see, Brian, coming out of that is probably asphalt plants closing down. I think that they could get started on the main structure and even complete that probably sometime into December, January. It's going to be the asphalt portion that may hold them up.
Yeah, the other part to add too, Mike, just to add for members of council is, as, as much as the applicants want to, want to push forward as fast as possible, we still need to make sure that we work with them as diligently as we can in, in preparing, you know, what will ultimately be the, the final site plan documents that go to the planning commission. And we got to make sure that, you know, that they minimally adhere to the design standards and characteristics that, that the ordinance requires and, and just want to make sure that, you know, it's really a, a great job. And so that, that could take some time, and, and as it is, the planning commission only meets once a month as well. So there, I mean, there, there, there could be some inherent, you know, time delays just, just moving it forward. But we, we want to make sure that we get it all, you know, you know, all done in, in a, in a real good diligent manner, so.
Well, I spoke to John Wallace today, who received one application for special use. He expects another one, I think he said by tomorrow. So for the planning commission's October meeting, we expect to have a public hearing on tho, at least those two applications.
Okay, if there's not any further discussion, would someone like to make that motion?
Allen Bass, I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution to extend time for conditionally authorized marijuana business applicants to submit step-two applications to the State of Michigan Marijuana Regulatory Agency.
Shippers, support?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes, motion carries. And tonight we do, in our packets, have the meeting minutes from the last planning commission meeting. And at this time, we'll open the floor for our second public comment. Not hearing anyone, we'll move to good of the order if anyone has anything this evening.
Mayor, I just wanted to mention that we have a household hazardous waste day scheduled for Saturday. This coming Saturday, it's from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at our wastewater facility located at 1121 Platt Road, and it's open to all city residents and residents of Wexford County.
Wonderful, thank you. Steve?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to thank everybody for the work session we had last Thursday, and I wanted to update council because I have had an opportunity to make several calls since that meeting. The feedback that I've gotten is that the DNR did not have any direction for us to move the path, so that it's absolutely appropriate to go back to them, to the original path behind the library, and it's believed that there would be support for that. There was some concern as to the safety of the current path by the DNR that was expressed to me, and it's actually preferred to go back to the original route, if I understand it correctly. I think two, and one of the things I wanted to update council and, and ask to see how we would be able to help Marcus with direction, is that previously, Mr. Scott Slaven from the DNR had come to the city with the possibility of private funding for part of the paving for the, what would be the northeast corner of South in Lake Street up to the library as that state property. And he had indicated that it was his understanding the city wasn't interested in that offer. And I, I would like to go back. He thinks that offer may still be there, and I would like to find out what possible funding might be available that would absolutely reduce the cost and pay for some of the paving there. He also indicated there may have been an offer of donation from the library regarding a picnic area there, which he said obviously fits right in with the DNR review of the matter and, and having those sorts of amenities. But I, I would like to get the information back as to why we would have turned down private funding if that was available to us. And I would like to reiterate that there was substantial concern over the safety of the current path along Lake Street. And that as a matter of fact, Mr. Slaven indicated that the letter that was attached to our second application, that for his part of the DNR process approved that path, that he hopes that it was mistakenly attached to the second application because he did not approve the second pathway. He had only written a letter for the pathway that went behind the library. So I really want to make sure that we give direction for Mr. Wallace and, and Marcus, I, I'd like you to be involved, to go back to the DNR regarding changing the pathways. It seems to be something that would, they would be open to. I would also like to give direction that Mr. Slaven indicated in his capacity, he would love to be part of the team working on this to get this going, and he, he thinks he would be a good resource. He just feels the communication wasn't real good with the city, which disappoints me. And I'd like to make sure we open up those avenues of communication in relation to that. And I'm happy to be involved and, and explain to him, I'd be happy to be involved. He believes that if we redirected that route, went through what we need to do to get the DNR approval, the project costs would come down substantially, and that we would be able to move forward with that path going to Chapin Street and then across into the Trailhead. The final thing I would like to talk about is if Marcus needs anything from us to make sure that any other meetings at the farmer's market has a PA system available. We had great turnout, real positive discussion, but I, from the audience that was there, I would say at a 90% call rate of, we couldn't hear enough, don't you guys have microphones and speakers? So I would like to see if, if we can borrow the, the school's PA system, anybody's PA system, rent a PA system, but make sure we have the ability for our citizens to hear and give input.
And Marcus and I already talked about that this afternoon, that very topic. Marcus, do you want to give an update?
We bought one today. So we should have it in by the time, or available, I should say. Certainly by the, the time we may have our, our next sort of in-person meeting, which when we talked at our special meeting last week was going to be for the meeting in November. So that should be taken care of, and we'll be able to use it for a multiple of other purposes and venues. If there's pop-up meetings or activities in other places or locations, even if it's not in the market, we'll be able to, to travel with it. So it should be, it should be a robust enough system with enough mics to be able to handle, you know, the kind of meeting that we had last week, which would be great. And councilmember King, I appreciate the, the updates you provided regarding the, the Trailhead project. I'll connect with John this week and have him reach out to, to Scott Slaven accordingly and, and dig some of that stuff out. I, I frankly, I couldn't tell you what, what transition from the original grant ask to the new grant ask. I know that's, that it's different folks out of the Lansing office that actually review and analyze the, the grant request versus the local group, but certainly the local group could perhaps apply some pressure if that's the direction the council wants to take it in, to have us look, look at a different location, so.
He indicated that he felt he could be a great resource in, while not being able guarantee anything, or said the same thing, through his capacity, especially his current one, he thought he could help extensively and that there would be great support for the original path.
Sure. And, and well, I know we were, we had talked about trying to get everything sort of fleshed out so that you could look at it as a part of our October, October 19th meeting. As we get into it, it might, it might require that we go beyond that date, depending upon how complex it is. Because I know that engineering will also likely need to re-engineer some of the, some of the trail, if the intent is still to create a, a Trailhead piece at the Chapin Lake Street location.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's a bad thing. I don't think that's a bad thing to have it be held up just a little bit since we got the, the extension from the DNR. And also, if we were to start any construction, I think this fall, tearing up any of that asphalt, then it takes away the parking for the DEQ building for the whole winter months. And so I think it's probably a godsend that, that we don't get moved forward.
No, I agree. I don't disagree either. So all good stuff.
Yeah, and the last thing, I, I, just because it's my memory, he did indicate that we probably want to reach back out to the DNR for potential funds that are available now in addition to what we have already gotten. There, there's a possibility there. Again, no guarantees, but he just indicated, hadn't seen a reach out on that yet, so I want to make sure we get that reach out.
Yeah, I, I think reaching out to Scott and having a meeting with him is going to be our, our best first next step. So tap into the people he's referring to and, and see what we can, see what we can crunch out. Scott Slaven would be a huge asset because us, want him in our corner. Good man.
Okay, did any of the other council members have anything for the good of the order?
All set.
Okay, all right. Well, this evening we do have to go into closed session. So if someone would like to make that motion?
I'd make a motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss written confidential legal opinions of the city attorney. Invite Adam Ajupka, Director of Public Safety.
The Shippers, I support that motion.
Councilmember Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes, motion carries.
All right, hang on one second.
I'll, I'll move, we go back into open session.
All right, councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Absolutely.
All right, now, Mayor?
Now we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everybody. See ya.
Bye.
With some ice cream.